The other location would be any facility at Howard Payne University, not just limited to the Academy of Freedom, but it might be Mem's Auditorium. We might use Daniel Baker, but uh, it's the Guy Newman Building there at the old Daniel Baker Campus. There's also for smaller hearings, they've got, I forgot what they call it, the Justice Center or whatever, it's the old school building that they re- deal.
Garling Center?
Garling, Garling Center, yes. So that's a smaller one, it's not anywhere the size of what we use for juries. But if, you know, if it was a small hearing for something that could be done, they've got a little courtroom. In fact, we donated years ago some of the leftover furnishings from the district courtroom that they used when they redid their room for the jury. So anyway, all that's, so any location at Howard Payne is just acceptable. The Coliseum had it, and then the third one is the Lyric Theater. This was suggested by Mayor Haynes at our meeting last week. I hadn't thought about that really. I talked to Eric Evans, the title escapes me, but it's like director, whatever he is for Lyric. Now, Lyric is shut down right now because of all this as well. They were hoping to have some student productions this summer, they had to cancel all those. They're open, you know, he and I talked for about thirty minutes on Friday about the possibility that I was concerned about parking, I was concerned whether it's going to be big enough there, what about restrooms? So he said, well, you know, we've got, there's certain parking lots around that we utilize, plus there's the room that I didn't even, I've never even, I guess been in, that's the one next to it. I think it used to be Four Corners and Others, you know, that they own as well, and they have some building behind it. So they have other areas with additional restrooms, space, and additional space for people, like gerars and even litigants, if there was a breakout room and so on. He quoted me the number, and the Hank Hunter, I believe is the name, who has Texas Clean, who's, I think they're chairman of their board, and they also provide the cleaning services there. And they've been trained, their folks have been according to Eric, and they do the cleaning that's necessary to comply with this COVID-19 guideline. So that's possible. And I'm certainly fine if we can, if you wanted to add the suggestion that Commissioner Worley added or mentioned the other day about something down fairground, the Home Act Building, if that's mutually agreeable. So you don't have to come back. None of these may work, so all of them may be fine, and then part of that will be depending on when, because if they, it may be that we could, one's available at one time, one's another, and maybe that we'll have to just be flexible. None of them are going to be used right now. So that's my suggestion to you, to add extra locations, big enough to keep people separate, and then if we can make it work, and it's mutually agreeable between us, the county, and the entity that owns it, that'll be decided later on. So right now, any questions on that part?
Judge Ellis, just to give everybody some perspective as to how much square footage is needed, each person, and this is each person that's going to those, would require thirty-six square feet. That's a six-foot square. And the Coliseum, I believe, is somewhere around twelve thousand square feet. The Lyric seats somewhere around three hundred. So if you took that down to, you'd be less than, less than a hundred people in the Lyric, probably around seventy-five. I don't know the square footage.
Now, he quoted me with the numbers, that there were about a hundred, it's about the number we would need.
Yeah.
But again, I haven't been over there, other than to attend functions.
And then the Homacking Building is a six-thousand-square-foot building. So it's larger than, and then Mem's Auditorium, I don't remember, it's been so long since I've been in there, it's a fairly large building.
It's good, it's good. And I know that in the Newman Building, they have, if we, there's, I'm thinking there for trial purposes, not for necessarily for jury selection, after you selected something, you could try it, like there's that big room that's in the Newman Building where there's sort of a well, you go down, and then the professor was down below, and the seating and the other tables, you know, it's, you could easily put, I'm talking twelve-person jury, and spread out, and then the restrooms are another thing. I was concerned about restrooms at the Home Act Building.
Yes.
I'm concerned about restrooms at the courthouse, to be honest with you, I'm concerned about restrooms in these locations, the Lyric and so on. So just know that this is going to take some field trips and some work together, but we got to start, and the starting is with you guys to approve it, and then we'll work it out in detail later.
I think we can approve almost any place within the city limits
You can.
of Brownwood to be an auxiliary courthouse. I don't think we would have any problem with that as a court. The problem comes in in trying to have a jury trial, and the cleaning that's involved, every time there's a break, there's got to be cleaning, and, you know, things like that. There was discussed the other day, and you're, you know, you're well aware of it, you've put this plan together. So we're here to help in any way we can, is what I'm trying to say.
I appreciate it. Now, I appreciate all your guidance, just know that it may be a bridge too far, it may be that we can't do it and keep people safe to have a jury. And right now, we're not even off the ones. But I keep coming back to what that Sackert mentioned to me earlier, you know?
Yes.
We have a right to a jury trial in this country, but if the right is an empty one, then it's a problem. And so if we can do it safely, we owe it to this republic of ours to do it. If we can't, then during this emergency time, we'll just have to wait until the emergency's over.
It's true.
So any other questions that I would have asked if you vote on that, if you guys will attend, we'll talk about that.
Do you have the resolution?
I have not drafted.
Or did you draft a resolution?
I will, I have the one that was done before.
Uh-huh.
This was the supplemental, when Adrian Beck, Vernon Moore, Richard Gibbs, and Steve Adams, and Ray West were involved. But that was the August, if you could approve the three locations that, you know, that are mentioned, and then we can, I'll give you, I'll draft a resolution for you, then you can sign it, the wording that suits you.
That would be item number B, seven B, so I will entertain a motion to approve what the district judge has requested.
Mark, we approve the location suggestion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Coliseum, the Howard Payne Campus and any building within, and the Lyric Theater as alternative courthouse facilities for jury and non-jury proceedings. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does that motion are out with you, Judge?
Well, that's perfect, and it'll be all subject to mutual agreements, obviously, for that.
Sure. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll draft a resolution, we're not going to be moving on this in the coming days. Anyway, it's going to be, earliest will be the twenty-second of June, and that's a real question. Okay, the next, and on the twenty-second, by the way, the Coliseum's available, I know, and so are the other locations that I mentioned, if we work that one out. Now, moving to the more imminent need, and the reason I came to you, this does not require your approval, I just wanted you to know where I'm at with it and where I'm at. What I have copied for you, I didn't, my printer was a little slow, the colored printer, the judge has got colored copies, if you want to look at it, each of you have a copy of this, Commissioner Worley and all of you, all the commissioners were sent by my staff last week when we set the meeting up, when I was meeting all the judges and working on this plan and getting the feedback. You were all sent a copy of the guidelines I've received from the Supreme Court and Office of the Court Administration, the things that are marching, instructions, what we've got to comply with, the boxes we've got to check to be able to do these things, to open court for in-person hearings. Now, so what I'm talking about, to be clear, is the requirements to hold court in person in the courthouse or any of these auxiliary. This is not juries, we're still not authorized to do that. This is in-person hearings, like Judge Kevin O'Neal mentioned to me, there's a great need for the eviction proceedings in the justice courts, they have to delay that, landlord tenant issues and things that are going on, and he's hoping that we can do that starting June first, if everything works. That's just one. So it's not this district court we're talking about. But just know that to do this, the law requires that the local administrative district judge, that's me, who consults with the county judge, the local health authority, and it's okay and appropriate to consult with the mayor as well, which I've included, he's not, it's not a requirement, but Judge Lilly and Mayor Haynes and the local health authority have been working so closely anyway, it made sense to me to incorporate that, because they've been hand in glove in all the many things these last several months, and I commend you for that. Because when our local and our county governments are working together, it helps everyone. So that being said, this is a plan that I'm responsible for drafting and signing, and I'm the only one who has authority to do it. And so you guys aren't going to be voting, you're not going to approve this, you're not going to reject it, I'm just telling you, this is where I'm at, and this is a draft. This is, I've got to send it to the regional judge, who's for our area, southern region, goes from here all the way to the Mexico border, and our judge is Judge Dean Rucker, who is former district judge out there in Midland, and he's the regional administrative judge. He then has to review it, make sure it complies with those guidelines that I sent you, that I've got to comply with, and this that I'm working on, they gave us a template, and the template has the required, this is coming from the top down, that is, the Centers for Disease Control recommendations, the National Health Guidelines through our Texas Health, there's the Minimum Standard Health Protocols, Texas Health and Human Services. I printed along all these things, the email that I sent you has, if you look at the guideline, it has a lot of footnotes, and that's what this is. So it has everything across the board that I'll be talking about. But it's important for you to see, and I thought it'd be best for you just to look at it in black and white, it's kind of like a term paper, which is, so it's got, I gave you the rough draft, which, because I don't have the color copy for you, only the judge, yours is not redlined, but that's what they call these redlined deals, where it takes the bracket out, so if I draw a line through something that is in their template, and I add something else, then it highlights what it is that I've taken out, what it is I've pulled in. If I, and then some of these were meant to have blanks filled in by the local people, that works. But then some of it were requirements that we've got to comply with, and if not, we've got to kind of explain why. So I'm going to go through this with you. Note, it doesn't need necessarily any votes, but the voting will come to the point where just knowing that I'm going to be asking you to do some things for the disinfecting and cleaning of the courthouse, because in order to do this, we're going to have to make the health standards, and there's a difference in cleanliness and disinfecting. Now, they're important, both, but you've got to have things clean enough, and then once cleaned, you've got to have them disinfected, because we will be ordering people to show up here. It's not like people voluntarily coming into Walmart to go shopping. They have a right to do that, and they can go if they want. But I'm ordering people, every judge will be ordering folks to come in, they don't volunteer for jury duty, they don't volunteer to have the court case prepared, they're being summoned, required to come, there are penalties if they don't, and if they show up and they're not in a safe environment, if we haven't done our part to have it ready and safe, then, you know, I have signed a death warrant for somebody before, and his name was McGinn, he brutally raped and murdered his own daughter, the Brown County jury convicted him, Judge Kaden Hitt, gave him capital punishment, he is appealing up to the Supreme Court of Texas, the Supreme, I mean, Court of Criminal Appeals, the Supreme Court of the United States, all that stuff, eventually, I didn't try the case, it was tried by Kaden Hitt, but I was the judge that had to sign his death warrants. So I don't want it, it's like the big thing, somebody dies, it's on a piece of paper, and they die on that day. I don't want to do that with jurors. I don't want to do that with good citizens that are out there, minding their business and having to come to court, and yet they get sick, and some people might die, because some of the people are in the vulnerable population. Anybody under seventy, they don't have an exemption for jury duty just for age. So you guys know, it's just, none of us in this room, none of us, anywhere, you know, reasonable people are going to want to put others in the danger of risk, and we're not going to do it. So, and so we don't want people to put their health and safety, but then it's that balance. If we can't do it, you know, we can't open court in person, we're going to have to continue to do a lot of these Zoom hearings. I see us having a hybrid system, I see us having to do a lot of these things, be a video conference still, in the future, in-person cases will be limited, and right now, all we're talking about is in-person, non-jury trials. That's all this deals with. So you'll see then, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but I'll have copies available if you want, for others, but just know, this is a working draft. But you'll see that, recognizing the need to ensure health and safety of litigants, attorneys, visitors, court staff, judges, and other individuals entering the building, housing the courts, and this would apply later to these auxiliary locations if we actually use them as a house. But right now, let's just wait and see. So it's going to, the courts of Brown County implement the following protective measure: one, all the judges will comply with the emergency orders issued by Supreme Court, Court of Criminal Appeals, including conducting in-person proceedings according to the guidance issued by them, and that regards to social distancing, we've already talked about, the guys are so familiar with, the maximum group size, other restrictions, and precautions. The judges are going to use all reasonable efforts to conduct proceedings remotely, like I talked about. That's two. Three is that the local judge, the administrative judge, me, will maintain regular communication with the local health authority, that's Lisa Dick, and the county judge, the mayor of City of Brownwood, and adjust the operating plan as necessary with conditions in the county. So if conditions on the ground either improve or deteriorate, they'll have to be flexible. And then the judges will begin setting non-jury, excuse me, non-essential in-person proceedings, no sooner than, and the earliest we can do it is June one, that's what I put in. That's only if we get everything approved. But that's the earliest, even if we get it approved, that we can do it. So I put that, and that's, so that's the June one date, why it's important. But if we're not ready, we don't have to open court for in-person hearings on June one, it's just the earliest we can do it, if you get everything done. So that's the general stuff, the judges and the court staff, it's got details there about, we've got to, we've got to work remotely if we can. I've had my staff working remotely and alternating days and so forth, and so they wanted us to have, how are we going to monitor our, the courts and the staff? Are we going to make sure we're safe? We don't come if we're sick and all that stuff. So I included, we'll self-monitor and report concerns and symptoms as appropriate. And that's the same wording that I noticed that Taylor County is using, because I, I'm not saying how I got a copy of their paper, but I did, so I'm just, you know, so it's not, no violation included, but they give me a copy. So they have, they're working on theirs too. Then it talks about the judges or court staff that feel feverish, have measured temperatures equal to, and it goes through all the stuff that you've got, you've got temperature, all the stuff, you've got chills, you've got muscle pain, you've got diarrhea, whatever it is, any of the symptoms of the coronavirus, because if you've got them, you, we can't come, we shouldn't come, we need to report it, we need to stay home, and we don't want to get anybody else. And we're saying, that's what we're going to do, okay? So our staff, us, the judges and the court staff will be required to wear face coverings when going to and from their offices, and in situations where they're in close contact with, red lines, what I've included, you know, I deleted some stuff that they had, they had it when we came to and from them, at all times, basically, I just take my mind off, and here, I'm not six feet, you know, closer to any of you, and it's easier for you to see me, you know, when you're trying to evaluate, well, I believe this person or not, you need to see their face. That's part of the problem with a jury trial or witnesses, when you're not able to see me. When you look like you're rather in the bank, it's kind of hard to evaluate. So, but, but otherwise, going to and from, we'll have to wear it, and then you'll see, so the face coverings, we've got to do that, protective measures, this is something that I've added. I have met with people from the early class, and they, because they came in, met with other people, I think with Sharon, maybe with Cheryl, perhaps, I know they met with the Judge Moss's staff, and to give us bids, and this is going to be one of those things that, I'm not asking for today, I don't know what the bid is, but I'm asking for plexiglass for me, some of these others may be different, but plexiglass temporary shields to be put up, and you may want to consider something like that here at the commissioner's courtroom, where you're not fixing something prominently, but you're putting something up as a barrier that would prevent people from spewing the particles out. And I would want to use that in the courtroom, on the bench, between the witness stand and the court reporter, the area where the closest, where the jury box would be, where people might be seated, because if we have a jury trial in that courtroom, we're going to have only three gerars in the jury box. Most of them can get in there, and even though that's a big box, without having them closer than six feet, the rest of them will be scattered out around the courtroom. I can put like eighteen or nineteen people in that courtroom, absent myself and the court reporter and the witness. And so that tells you how few, you know, how big a space we've got to get, like Commissioner Worley was talking about. So anyway, you'll see that, and it goes on and on, talk about scheduling, we'll have to coordinate our schedules, we can't have all court running at the same time, and because I've got a coordinator and assistant coordinator, and they can work together and work with the other commissioners, I mean, with the other county judges and coordinators, the J.P., the county judge, the county clerk of law, those ladies, you communicate, these things, so we don't double book, we need to have our corporate staggered, we can't have, I know, you know, it was open today, you've got the rule about five people, something coming in, and that doesn't apply to the litigants, and, you know, I mean, I don't know how we're going to, we've got to figure that out, we can't just assume. So as long as exchange of information, on maybe a weekly basis, and then if you're adding stuff, you know, everybody can't be nice, so we might have, you know, we've got to figure out the way to work, that's got to be done, we've got to stagger it, we've already talked about it last week, but it's, the plan needs to be, you know, clear. And the best way I know is to have those ladies, who are very competent, work that out, and then keep that information going, by emails, so that everybody knows what's happening. And there'll be changes, there'll be, one week, there may be a greater need in the county court than the district court, because of some compelling case or concern, and vice versa. So anyway, then scheduling, we talked about, you'll see vulnerable populations, it gets addressed, how we deal with that, we've got to do that, they're requiring, and I'll not read all that, you can read it, but some of the stuff I've added, I've added in there that require us to have some means of protecting people. Obviously, we need to put in our jury summonses and our notices to people for settings, our docket notices, that if you're sick, don't come, call us, if you've got, you know, if you're concerned about your safety, if you're in the vulnerable population, over sixty-five, all this stuff, you call us, and we'll let you testify remotely, or by affidavit, or by video written deposition, or other, we'll work something out. We're not going to make people come, and if a juror gets a summons, and they're scared to come, they go call the court, say, what's the problem, you know, excuse them, I don't want people up there that are going to be at pretty risk, you all know me. So that's the kind of thing, that's later on in jury, right now, we're not even talking about juries, but it'll be the same thing applying to that. This will be the litigants. And then social distancing, all that is, you know, the common areas is a problem. Each restroom is supposed to, and I had to mark through, has been evaluated, I put will be evaluated, we're going to have to do, it's going to have to be determined of the capacity to ensure social distancing, the maximum capacity. Maybe you all know, I don't know, each of these rooms, you know, Judge Lilly may, you guys may, I know that that number's there, to get the capacity of courthouse, but these, the common areas are a real concern. Open, the restrooms are a major concern. During recesses in jury's trials, usually I have a fifteen-minute room, and let the people go into restroom, and that's going to work though. I mean, we're going to have to have one person in the restroom at a time, and they're going to go, I don't know who's going to be monitoring that, you know, I'm sure the sheriff deputies really don't want to have to do that, but they're not going to do it, and how, we probably need some signage up here, I think that we're going to probably need to get some things that can be temporary signage on the floor, saying, this is where you stand, do not go into the restroom until it's vacant, and, you know, keep people separated out, maybe every six feet, we have a little spot, so that is a waiting line to use the restroom, they know where they can move up to, I don't know. That's not my expertise, but you know what, I'm, you get the gist of it. And so we're going to have to have hand sanitizers, locations where we can't let more than two people from the same household in an elevator, you know, you're going to have to have maximum number of people in the gallery that are determined and posted, right now, I've got little flashcard numbers in each of the spots to mark where people can sit in the district courtroom. All the other courtrooms have to do the same thing. You probably ought to be considering, now, commissioner's court is not a quota court like is under these mandates, but it's, you know, you may want to consider doing that in this room too, that where, this is where you can sit, and there's a capacity for this room, and I don't know, I've been looking behind me to see, are we being seated, I don't know. You know, there's a certain amount of presence that has to be involved with this, but we're going to have to limit the seating to every other row where possible. The churches are having to do some of the same things, but, you know, so it's that kind of stuff, as we think about it. The well of the court, that's the area where, between where the lawyers are seated and where the judge is, and every courtroom has a little different, this would be like the well of the commissioner's courtroom. Then you're going to be limited to how people, how many people there, and that's where the plexiglass dividers comes in. Hygiene, I'm on this hygiene page where it talks about hand sanitizers are supposed to be placed at the entrances to the building, outside of elevators on the floor, outside of each courtroom, and outside of the bathrooms. I haven't seen them, I don't know where they are, do we have them? We don't, we've got to get them, and who's going to do that? That's all's responsibility, figure that out, you know, we have to buy them down here from Teddy's Brew House and get the mystery, so if he's making it, you know, we can do it, we just got to, we got to do it. We can't, we can't just say, well, we can't get them, we've ordered our normal supplier, it's not there, therefore we wring our hands and forget it. If we're going to do that, you know, we're not doing our job, and if we don't have these things done, we won't have court personnel. That's just the way it is, because I'm not ordering them, and we won't be complying. The screening is an issue. Oh, that's up here, we're supposed to put these stop and spread the germ suppliers, that's an easy fix, I put some on outside my courtroom, English and Spanish versions, I'll leave these with you, scatter them around, put them all around the courthouse, we're supposed to have them on every floor and every building area, and it's just those things that we already know, but.
This is before we open for court?
Yeah, supposed to be, before we just, before we can do this, we've got to have them all outside, you know, so this is all of this, before we open for it. And so then the individuals attempting to enter the court building, security personnel are going to have to ask them. And that's, I put security personnel in, I've heard mixed things, I don't know, I've heard that from some of the bailiffs, well, the sheriff said, no, his men aren't doing that, I don't know who's going to do it then. Someone said, I know that Judge Lilly had, there was an offer made a few months ago for the nurse students from Ranger to maybe help out, but I don't know that they're going to be available all the time, or, you know, if not, who? You know, right now, security personnel, is what I put in my plan, are going to be asking people, are they feeling feverish? This is outside the building, attempting, are they out of cough, difficulty breathing, on and on, you can see it, this is, I'm on page, I guess, three, it details what we're going to do, under screening. We got to do that, and if we don't do it, we're not going to be compliant. And then staff who are screening the individuals entering the courtroom will be provided, this is what the law says. And then, and I put in there, and encouraged to wear, I deleted the thing that says required, I know how hard-headed some of our deputies are, in our opinion, I kind of like the judge and that's sitting before you, you know, we don't like to do all these things, but somebody's going to have to do it, we've got to figure it out. So I just, I put there, that then would be encouraged to wear, the PPE equipment, I don't know if we've got it, I asked, I asked the sergeant this morning, I said, you guys, what do you have, I noticed everybody's wearing the mask today. Well, they said, do you have the overalls? No. You know, do you have the gloves? Well, you know, we got, I think he said, we don't have the gloves, we don't, you know, maybe they have gloves, and they got the masks, but they don't have the shields, they're supposed to, you know, they're supposed to either have gloves or these eye protection goggles, disposable face shields to fully cover the front sides of the face. They're somewhere, I mean, they're out there, and I do know this, that the Office of Court Administration has said that the governor's given a green light to the courts, there's a place we can contact, so our list of stuff, if we can't get it to other sources, they're supposed to coordinate it, and they're supposed to furnish it.
We have plenty, sir, we have, it's sitting at the fire station, we've got three pallets full.
Well, it needs to be distributed to the people that are on the front lines doing. Well, it needs to be distributed to the people that are on the front lines doing. These guys out here need it. They need it today. They need it today. If we're letting people come into the public, that needs to be today. That's one of the reasons why I was asking that we might want to wait till we hold the public, but understand that decision been made. Just know that it needs to be done. So you've got to decide that. Face coverings are all down there. Cleaning is the next issue. That rolls into what Judge Lilly mentioned on the one other item on the agenda. The court building's got cleaning staff. I'm going to be signing this. It's going to say, we're going to clean the common areas of the court building so that the common spaces are cleaned at least every one. Some places are doing it more often. I put day. Okay. But that's the, that's what Taylor County does. But that means these halls and these restrooms, that's every day. This is, this has got to be disinfected. I know we've got two good guys that come here and I know Carl gets here five o'clock in the morning when there's public is here. He's probably doing that. That's a real, that's going to, more people coming in here, that's even more compelling and more problematic. But it does take, you guys, it just takes one person with this stuff spreading it around and then everybody else, you know, you don't even know you got it. And you got it. And so, so the cleaning staff has got to clean, this is, this is the real kicker. What they want is we're supposed to clean council tables, witness stands, and any other places where people have been seated in the courtroom. And that's, frankly, as loose as I can get it right now. In between every hearing, between the morning and afternoon proceedings, and at the end of every, each day in the courtroom is used. If a room is not used for seven days, like a lot of the courthouse has not been used until today for public, and the district courtroom's still closed, it's not been opened up. So that it's, it doesn't need to be cleaned because you seven days, this virus is dead. It's not going to spread. Nobody has been in there to get it. But, you know, it's, it's an issue on an ongoing basis. And you, every time you've got more people in there, every time to break, everything, you're supposed to do this. And then, and then it says the cleaning building, cleaning staff have been provided, cleaning supplies known to be effective. And, you know, there's a list and I've got it here. You guys want to know what supplies need to be used, what kills it, what doesn't, how to do it. There's a protocol in place. I don't, I don't know all this stuff, but I can read it. And I know that we got, we got to have Carl and Brian and then anybody that helps. Those guys can't do it all. And that's why I urge you to hire people. I understood, we talked about this when this first broke and I suggested to Judge Lilly that you guys get somebody to help on the cleaning and the disinfecting. And it was removed from the agenda. I don't know all the ins and outs about that. Hadn't been voted on. I'm sure it's economics. I don't think you got any bids, Major, you were trying to do. And, and that may be a problem. We may not get any bids. But there's people out of work right now. There's folks that need jobs. We can give them jobs. We need to give them paying wage. We need to give them benefits. We need to hire people. I could see a need for three people, probably, and this is a sexist thing to say, but probably some ladies who can, who know the difference in dirty and clean and who pay attention and who, you know, but whoever you get, male, female, it doesn't matter. But somebody that, that is trainable, that will do it and will work under, under Carl and Brian. And whether, if you can't get three, one for each floor, then two float and concentrate where their need is. And, you know, maybe we just going to have, we got to do it. If we don't do it, we're not opening the courtrooms because we can't comply.
Judge, this is not something you've dreamed up. This is mandated.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I want people to know that this is not something that you sat here dreamed up. This is something that's been pushed to you.
It's been required to, is saying, if you guys want to open, you got to do it. Now, how we do it is up to us, but we got to do it. And every court in the state's flat in the same deal. And that's just to get us open for business, you know, semblance of what we do. If we don't do this, what we can do still is the remote zoom stuff, which we'll do. And we'll operate like we've been doing. It's just going to be, it's just kind of a shadow of what we've done before. And the numbers, we've got a lot of people sitting in jails and other places that, you know, wanting jury trials and I can't give it to them. And they're still sitting there. But they're, but we also have issues with the prison system. I mean, it's kind of like, what you can't do a jury is if, if really realistically, if they're, if prisons are closed, if people are convicted, you know, so you've got to balance that. Not to say that everybody's going to be convicted, but you know, all that's a question. So I didn't bring all this up. I'm just trying to educate you guys and the public, incidentally. And you see, this is a draft. So this is, please give me your input. If you see something here that says, Ellis, you're crazy, don't put that in there, do this. I welcome your suggestions because I haven't set this off yet.
I know you have a hearing.
I'm already behind. But you guys vote on it. I know you guys have been responsible. You're all good folks. You'll, you'll deal with the right thing as you see the right thing to be.
Well, before, before you leave, let's, let me reread seven A, discussion and possible approval action regarding items needed for the courthouse to accommodate non-jury and jury judicial proceedings. Do you need us to take any action under that?
What I need you to do is just, is to authorize the things that are incidental to these things that I don't have control. I don't have the power to input all these hygiene things, to put all these signs up, to do, I mean, you guys need to authorize the cleaning and the, and the, and the use of the building that is, that complies with this.
Okay. How about I make a motion under seven A that says, we authorize, or y'all authorize the maintenance department to obtain all necessary items to make us compliant with the Office of Court Administration's orders before we can open for criminal proceedings.
At least, you know, if it be any proceeding. It's not just criminal. It's kind of anyway. So what I would ask you to do is the things that, that are in your bailiwick. You're not going to tell us how to do the court part, but you're the ones that are responsible for the signage, the placement, the kind, the equipment, personal protective equipment, all of this stuff, and figure out who's going to be doing the testing when people come up. You got to have these infrared thermometers. I don't know if you read that in there. Look at that. Make the list, see what it is, and figure out who's doing it. Because some of that's the sheriff's office, some of that's yours, you know, different ones. I don't know.
I think, I think that motion's inclusive enough.
Yes. As long as, I would just ask that you approve, that you do the things, approve the things necessary for us to implement the plan as approved. The court plan to open up for in-person hearings. That's what I'd ask. You've got a copy of the plan as I've written it out. That's, that's what I'm proposing to send off. I'm going to send it to all the judges for their input. And it'll be a version of that. There'll be some things that might be edited out, but you get the gist of it.
I think the logistics are covered in the motion I made. Can I have a second?
Do you recall what it was?
I can't say.
Let me ask you, since I'm presenting, I'm asking you to approve the, the, the physical things necessary to implement the court plan for in-person hearings as required by law. That would be the motion.
I would put that in a motion.
Things necessary to what?
Implement the physical things necessary for Brown County to begin having in-person court hearings in accordance with the law. That's what I ask you to do.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
One more.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Before you, before you leave, we've got, I know you're in a hurry, but we have item number seven C, which is consideration, possible approval to arrange for a contractor or hire temporary personnel to clean the courthouse. The judge pretty much covered all of that. I put it on here for action. We've got, we've tried in the past and no one will bid on it. So I would make a recommendation. I'll tell you what. I'll make a motion that we hire three people, one for each floor on a temporary basis. And that to the extent possible, Bob Cetras is going to come up next and he's going to tell us about funding. We just received a large amount of funds to help with COVID issues. So they can be paid out of there. So let me say, I, I make a motion that we, all right, that we hire three temporary personnel to help with cleaning and disinfecting the courthouse until the pandemic is over or until further notice.
I want to hear about the money for, I'd like to.
Well, the only thing I'd like to see stipulated in that is they are temporary and they will not be employed or past this pandemic. And if they are temporary, they could be twenty-nine hours or less. So they don't, we don't incur benefits. There are some other stuff in there.
Sure.
I think that, that hiring these temporary employees wouldn't come under the, I guess, reimbursement acts. I mean, the county would have to put up the money first, but we would get reimbursed for it. And I don't know if that's a hundred percent reimbursement or if it's a seventy or whatever. But anyway.
Well, if you want, we could tell you, but Bob's going to come up and tell you, we just got a chunk of money, a hefty chunk of money to help with things.
Yes. I heard there's a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, but that can be eaten up fairly quick if you got three people hired for, from now till December thirty-one. And that, this could carry further than that.
Yeah, it could.
But.
Judge, Judge Ellis, we, we will take care of that if you need to go. You don't need to sit here and listen to it.
Thank you guys. And I will send you, if you've got any suggestions for me on that written plan, make them to me. Otherwise, I'm going to probably, I'll send you the final version once that's done. And I'm hoping to get that to, because we're up to the twentieth. I think that's, that's my, that's my goal of this one. So this will, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge Ellis. I got everything I've got.
All right. Y'all want to table this until after you hear from the office and come back to it?
Absolutely.
Let me, let me get Lisa. Let's get the health department. Let's move down to item number seven, T. Is Commissioner Felton has this every week. I'll speak for him. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak, any daily changes need, needed may arise. Any discussion and reports concerning and responses to county needs take, and any action needed to be taken under COVID, because of COVID-19. Lisa, this is where you speak to us every week. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Lisa Depp, Brown County Health Department. Our numbers look pretty consistent from our last information that came out on Friday. We still have tested five hundred and fifty-ish. Hold on a second. I might be needing to write numbers. Five hundred and fifteen. And then we had fifty-one positive total during this outbreak. We do have results from our first drug-free testing, which happened last Tuesday. There were thirty-nine people tested and all of those were negative.
How many?
Thirty-nine and all of those were negative. And so we reconciling those and adding those to our account this afternoon. Other things that have changed are there kind of a little bit of change in focus for us. And we'll be focusing on high-risk groups. And so the main high-risk group, what we feel like we have here are nursing home facilities. And so we do have approval for the state to come in and do widespread testing of all of our seven nursing facilities here in the county.
That will begin tomorrow, by the way.
And so it all has to be completed within a two-week period. So we're moving pretty quickly. We requested assistance from, from this, from National Guard. So they hopefully came in and assisted with that testing. So, and then the other thing that had happened this weekend is that the nursing facility was disinfected. The one where there had been outbreaks, the National Guard came in and did that. And so we're very thankful for that additional help. And I think everything went very well. So, any questions?
So how many have actually got it at this minute in Brown County?
At this moment, there are still active cases. We had fifty-one cases and we have had, I'm going to get all the calculator out and do a little bit of math here while we're talking.
So it'd be the fifty-one minus, unfortunately, the seven that have passed away and then minus the.
The twenty-five that are recovered.
The recovered.
We have nineteen active cases in the county currently. So most of those are not out of the community. They are in the nursing facility. But we do have several that are employees. And then we also have one that is maybe two that are associates or some type of connection to those employees. The number is small, but it also says that it can't be out in our community and we still need to continue to be cautious.
But our community's doing a fantastic job. We have an extraordinary, we have a very low community spread.
We do have a very low spread out in the community.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you, ma'am. God bless the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Hey, item number seven H goes along with this one, consideration of possible approval of any action needed. I don't have anything that I need, that we need to prove gone. We're going to, shortly, you're going to be asked about barriers and all related to COVID for various offices. Those expenses also are, well, if we get the, if we receive those funds this week, it will be reimbursable. We'll pay them direct out of those funds. But that's, those are separate line items or separate items on the agenda. All right. If there's no, no action required on that, then Bob, come on up. I'm going to skip down to seven K, which is Bob Cetras, our grants coordinator. He's going to discuss unclaimed capital credits program and general grant update for you.
So Commissioners, I emailed you all, I believe, last week. This is a lot of information and I, I just printed it off so you can kind of have a foot reference. We applied last week for the coronavirus relief fund. And under that act, each, it's a formulary grant in Brown County, we are, have been approved for seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Now, if the judge would sign this authorization here, I'll give him a second, then we will immediately get twenty percent of that deposited into our account. And that comes to a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. That will be within ten days. Now, this money can, it didn't stipulate exactly everything that's got to, it can be spent on, but generally, anything that we can directly relate to the coronavirus. For example, thermometer, protective shield, COVID, special cleaning, science, any kind of chemicals, even, I didn't look, it's, it's an extensive list, but I would assume that we have to hire someone temporarily. But anyway, Judge, so you have the authorization or if you sign it, I'll give it to the auditor and that will be deposited to our account electronically within ten days.
And we're going to put this in a specialized account, correct?
Not that I know of, the auditor.
The auditor.
Don't tell me where to put it.
Okay. We just need to put it in an account where I can track it because we're reportable to the, to the federal government for.
Is this FEMA?
No. Also, Chief Creed, there's also a FEMA number open for reimbursement, correct?
That is true.
So this is money they're giving us upfront, but then we also can get reimbursement for things we would like ozone, we've already done. We will submit reimbursement under FEMA, which is another avenue of reimbursement. So.
That's actually offered.
Yeah.
A fixed award county, so it's coming to us through them.
But this one will give us a hundred and what, forty?
Well, immediately a hundred and forty-one thousand.
Upfront.
And then up to seven hundred and seven thousand. Now, the way I understood it is we have to, this all has to be spent by December, but they're going to audit us. We have to be able to say that we did spend it according to how we stipulated it should be spent. So there may be an audit on it.
All right. Anybody, any other grants you need to tell us?
Yes, sir. This is the unclaimed, if you sign that, this is the unclaimed capital credits for this year.
Oh, yeah.
Last year, we got twenty thousand. It's only been, that program's been in progress for four or five years. And every year, it's, it's climbed significantly, sometimes doubling on one year. It's gone from three thousand to twenty thousand in four years. Hopefully this year, we'll, we'll get some more. We can pass these down, please, pass them around. This year is an approval for a grant that we applied for almost a year and a month ago. This is for the May water system. They have several, they've got out of these three years, seven or eight, some of them for twenty hours or more. So we applied for a grant for generators, amount of forty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. It was approved. And so there's the information we have right there. I'll work with Commissioner, don't get this rolling. Commissioner Shaw, we're in about the same time for low water crossing. I keep wanting to hear on that and I hope to hear good news on that and let you know soon if that happens. Just recently, we applied for the economic development restoration, three point six million dollars to fix our roads. That's a, that's a fast track grant. I was told this morning that it has gone on to the consideration. So they, they all like most grants. So they, they'll, like most grants, they'll come back and ask for more information. Hopefully this thing will be a short term, we'll know that money on that. And then the tip grant, the Texas Infrastructure Fund grant for, that's only 202,000. Our share is 162,000. I still need to get a little bit of information more from the road crews, supervisors on that. So that's the only thing I've loaded up. When we get that in, we have until the 27th to apply.
27th, I think.
27th, yeah. What I just need is starting and stopping points, not in geographical coordinates, but in intersections, where they want the road fixed, you know, like one mile east of the intersection of Castle 411. That got, I think, all this week.
Thank you, Bob.
I think that's it. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you bringing that money in, we appreciate it. All right, I'm going to go to item number seven I. Is Sharon Ferguson, county clerk, consideration and possible approval of installation of new countertop and clear barriers in the county clerk's office that comply with the CDC guidelines.
I decided that we would get the glass shield like we have out here for the security. So I've got a proposal from early glass in Brownwood Door. And the proposal to do, I have a very long counter in front of my office. It's 3,447.
Is that for glass or plexiglass?
Glass. Just like theirs, that's what they have. But before I can get the glass, that countertop has that holes in it. And I've had, it's been there since I have 33 years that I know of, probably longer than that. I needed a countertop first. I decided it'd be a great time to get the countertop. So I've got two quotes for that. One from Brownwood Decorating for 4,128.65. That includes the long one, and then I have another long one that research your shoes. And then another quote from Two Novo's Remodeling. Not everybody does that. I've called all of the carpet areas, the Jones Carpet, this one down here. No one does that payment on the countertops because it has to be smooth and like that. And it was for 5,000, so of course I would like to go Brownwood Decorating for that. So I did have money in my budget for that. Of course, I would like to come and pay for the glass.
And let me ask, you want the glass, the plexiglass would be a lot cheaper and a lot lighter on the counter.
They just suggested I get glass.
Because we got that one out there, so think because of the nature of your job, you know.
It's just, I think, did you get glass too? And we all did, all three of us.
The glass is a lot easier to clean and it's yellow.
They told us that picks the glass from scratch, shatterproof.
It will scrap.
And they suggested that all of us get the glass.
And they'll probably leave this up there forever.
We're going to leave it up there. You know, back when, when you go in offices, they already had that. And then we got away from that, now everybody's going back to it. But back in the old days, everybody had that in their offices.
Right, right.
And then we got away from it. And now it'll stay permanent, but I need the countertop first before I can get that bolted to the counter.
All right.
Those countertops are metal.
Sure. I'll make a motion for you that for the glass, you will be allowed to have that installed and that funds be used from the COVID reimbursement to pay for that. And in the same motion, your countertop, you have funds in your budget to pay for that. I'll make a motion to approve that. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
The county's got to pay for it first before it gets reimbursed. So you can't say it's...
Well, it's only two weeks before it comes in.
I understand, but before...
Already got to show that you're paying for it.
Right, if, let me, all right, I'm in the motion to say if the COVID funds are deposited in our account before then, pay for it out of that. If not, pay for it out of courthouse maintenance to be reimbursed by the COVID funds. Is that all right with the auditor?
I'll second that, yes.
It's already been seconded.
Changed it, but that's fine.
Is that okay with the auditor?
Yes.
The way that's worded. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Sharon, that passes for you. All right, seven J is in John, Christine Pentecost, tax assessor collector. Consideration of possible approval of installation of clear barrier in the tax assessor collector's office to comply with CDC recommendation. Basically the same thing that the...
Yes. In mine is, I don't really know exactly how much difference. We have, my bin has 21 linear feet and 30 inches tall. We have my big couches.
Yes.
The bin we have is 2,806.25.
That'll make the complete horseshoe for you?
Yes. Well, we're going to leave the one spot open that has no, no, but here's... And I do have also, we need to take it out of that.
I don't want my goal...
It'll be the same as mine, the same option type with it.
What was the amount?
2,806.25.
Okay. I move we approve the purchase and installation of glass shields in the tax assessor collector's office.
Check. Tell you what, we need to add in that motion that when funds are available, we'll pay for that.
I thought I'd do it just like my motion.
Okay, I just want to put it for the record, lots of people are watching this on television. Okay, so motions been made, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Passes, there you go, ma'am. And Cheryl, come on down. Cheryl, are you in here?
Cheryl gave it to me, she had court.
Okay, let me read it for the record. Item number seven K is consideration approval of installation of clear barrier district court, in the district court's office to comply with CDC. She wants the same thing.
She wants the same thing. Hers is only 2,053. And she's getting the same thing as Christine.
I move we approve the purchase of clear barriers for the district clerk's office and be labeled for COVID-19 reimbursement, paid out of...
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, all right, fantastic. Okay, then come on down. The sheriff's not here. Item number seven N, consideration and approval, or possible approval of employee changes for the sheriff's office. Sorry, mask keeps getting in my eyes when I'm trying to read.
Ezra, the sheriff had a surprise jail inspection, so he sent me this morning. Sent me a few things.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. First, due to disciplinary action, a previous sergeant has been promoted down to his regular deputy. We have a reduction of $200 a month in his pay. That's, sheriff asked me not to throw a name out there.
Sure.
So that's the first one. The second one, Deputy Hobson will temporarily be promoted from corporal to sergeant in patrol, which would add $100 a month to his salary to go from corporal pay to sergeant pay. And then Taylor Fletcher will be made temporary corporal from deputy, and that will add $100 to his pay per month. So the 200 being lost on one deputy is going to be to the two other deputies.
Is that all the changes you need?
All the changes, yes.
I move we approve the employee changes in the sheriff's office. Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? And seven N is sheriff presentation or jail report.
Okay, on the jail report, we have 142 inmates, seven of those are contract, 133 male, 22 female.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry you had to sit for so long.
That's all right. Lieutenant Scott. Lieutenant. I'll take a message.
Don't run from anybody on the way out.
I didn't see all that.
Okay, then we'll go back up now that you've heard from Mr. Contreras, go back up to item number seven C. Does anybody want to take any action on that? What I would recommend is that the glass barriers, if we do take action on item C, that we reserve as much of that money for this cleaning staff. And we take the glass barriers and submit them under the FEMA number through emergency management. That's what I'm saying, that 147, if we submit the clear barriers under the FEMA number, under emergency management, that means we wouldn't have to pay for that out of the 147. We could use that to fund item number seven C.
What is the difference in the reimbursement grants?
They're both...
Are they both 100% grants?
Yes. Well, the FEMA, the FEMA one will be, it's reimbursement of anything we've used so far on COVID. Now, this money that Bob Contreras just mentioned to us, that's brand new. That just popped up last week and they decided to send that, it's kind of advancing. Lots of counties can't afford to pay for it ahead of time. So it doesn't matter how we do it, it's just where do we want to fund? It is reimbursable, and we've got up to 700,000 that we can justify. We just have to ask for it once we go through the 147.
Well, that won't take very long.
Not if we hire three personnel. It'll probably be around October, by nine numbers, basically, we'll pay them. Now, there's no benefits or anything like that, they're full-time temporary is... Yeah, I think so. What's our starting salary for?
For a clerk?
For a clerk? Well, I know, we don't have much to compare it to. We've got temporary agents in our precinct. Do you?
Make 12, 12 for some of the week. You might not be even that, 12 bucks an hour.
I thought I was told when I hired a temporary one...
Temporary is $12 an hour.
Twelve?
Twelve, all right, 12 dollars.
Well, I have election workers for 12 and early voting workers for 12.
Yeah. All right, how about we, I would make a motion that we, as I did before, but I'm going to change it a bit. I would make a motion that we hire two full-time temporary personnel to start cleaning and disinfecting each of the floors.
At least till they start the trials.
Right, right.
You might have to put another dollar.
Is it considered temporary full-time or temporary part-time?
Part-time.
What did I say?
You did not just ask, temporary, part-time?
Temporary, part-time. I would say, what is it?
Temporary, part-time.
29.
29 hours, the cap is 32, isn't it?
No, it's 30.
30 now?
So that's why all of our part-timers are 29.
29. And I think between the two of them, they can divide up and get the extra floor.
Or cleaning and to, it's all...
Tell Fergie what I said.
You'd think there'd even be some sort of, like, change to everything else. This 29-hour, 30-hour, you know, if it was an emergency, I don't know why that's...
They haven't yet. I think you're going to have hard time finding people.
Oh, I don't know, there's quite a few unemployed.
I know, but that don't mean they won't clean.
That's a good point. All right, so there's a motion on the floor, do y'all want to act upon it?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I will monitor very clearly to make sure, working with the auditor and the treasurer, to make sure we track every penny we spend on this endeavor. So, all in favor? Motion carries. Let's see, item number, let's finish out the sevens. Item number seven D is consideration, and this was on the agenda last week, we didn't have it worded properly. Consideration of possible approval of declaring surplus property. Chief Creed, come back up.
I'm sorry, sir.
Come back up and tell us what surplus property is, since it's under your control. Everybody knows what it is, but this is for the record.
The property in question is a 2010 Dodge Charger sedan.
And all the markings and everything have taken off, so it complies with the state requirements to sell it?
That is correct, all the markings have been removed and all the equipment has been sealed out.
All right, I make a motion that we declare the 2010 Dodge Charger surplus property.
Second. Have you got the bin number? Sharon's going to need that.
I don't have it, sir, but we can get it for her.
All right, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's declared surplus property. And then item number seven E is consideration of possible approval to list the surplus property on the GOV deals. And of course, the money will go back to the sheriff, whatever settles for it.
Make a motion, we should list the surplus property, the Dodge Charger on the GOV deal list.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw's made a motion that we list the Dodge Charger as on the GOV deals to try and sell it. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Treewick, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? All right. And item number seven F is consideration of any possible action regarding the burn ban that we reinstated last week. I'd like to see it left on.
Please, I'm fine with it staying in place.
Okay, so we'll take no action on seven F. All right, that'll take us back up to the top seven, I'm sorry, item number four. Consideration approval of minutes of May 11, 2020.
Most of you approved the minutes from May 11, 2020.
They can't hear you.
Make a motion, approve the minutes from May 11, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Shaw made the motion, Commissioner Treewick seconded it. All right, so a motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Let's see, item number five is consideration approval of any treasurer or auditor's report. Positive, you're here?
Yes, we do. There's a, I guess, county investment report for the first quarter in front of you. If you'd like to look at that. The first quarter investment totals are, what we received in interest is $33,332.15. And this is Brown County investment report for the first quarter of 2020. The undersigned Commissioners' Court of Brown County, Texas hereby certifies that Ann Carpoon, County Investment Officer and Treasurer, and Gary Worley, County Investment Officer, Commissioner Precinct One, presented Brown County Quarterly Investment Report ending March 31, 2020. The report is accepted as presented on May 18. And I move we approve this report for the first quarter of 2020.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor? Do we have anything else under that item? All right, item number six, consideration approval payment as bills, any bills as needed. This should be our last item, I don't think I've missed one. Do you have a couple of bills in front of you? I marked all of the nine. I assume we're using errors. I didn't word that. Okay, we have a motion to pay the bills, if I have a second. Okay, Commissioner Treewick seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bills are paid. Y'all double-check me, I don't see that I've missed anything on the agenda. I think we've got them all, we did quite a few skipping around to accommodate people in time. All right, so we'll meet again next Monday, or Monday is Memorial Day, so we will need to be on Tuesday. Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m. here, is everybody okay with that? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.
Somebody got the minutes over there?
Yes, in the jail report.